We just want to, I want to dedicate this 20 minutes to celebrating some of SEDRP's regional initiatives and accomplishments. And I want to show you some ways how you can continue to stay involved with SEDRP after this annual meeting is over. So please, if you don't have one on your table, pick up a copy of the first ever SEDRP 2024 Impact Report. It summarizes some of our key accomplishments and impact statistics from 2024, and we have extras over at the registration table. So last year, as you can see in the graph, we saw steady partnership growth while maintaining that nearly perfect pie chart, representing equal quarters from the private sector, academic sector, nonprofit sector, and all levels of government. So SEDRP strives to build regional resilience through the three Cs. It's all about Cs today, and we keep coming back to that, but here we are coordinating, connecting, and communicating. And in our most recent impact survey, eighty-one to eighty-four percent of you told us that the SEDRP newsletters, the website, and/or social media posts benefited you in your work. Our LinkedIn presence and following has been exploding lately. So I encourage you, if you, if you don't connect with us on LinkedIn, if you haven't connected with us on LinkedIn yet, please do. We're constantly putting, posting updates, and you can keep up with us that way. And our website has exploded lately, too. Unique visitors seeking information and resources from SEDRP website shot up sixty-seven percent from the year before. So if you aren't a member of SEDRP yet, please sign up today. Members are the foundation of SEDRP, and they are critical to the continued information sharing and relationship building provided by the partnership. Annual membership, individual membership includes a variety of benefits, as you can see on these slides, and also listed on our website. So you can join SEDRP via our website, and we try very, very hard to keep our annual dues low, as low as possible. And please note that we offer a unique observer membership, which is free, or it's pay what you can, and it's meant to give you a chance to kind of try us out. As an observer, we invite you to learn about SEDRP, our partners, our initiatives. We'll send you our weekly newsletters and invite you to our monthly partnership meetings. And students, we welcome you into SEDRP with a much lower rate at fifty dollars a year. And then you can see we offer individual, eight types of individual memberships with annual dues that vary based upon your professional sector. In addition to individual members, we also offer group memberships for organizations. Our group members are the backbone of SEDRP support. Group members come with four, three, or two individual memberships and all the associated benefits with them. So please reach out to us if group, group membership is right for your organization. Next, please meet our SEDRP Advisory Board members. If you are a 2024 or an incoming 2025 Advisory Board member, please stand up. We would like to, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And thank you to each of you for your time and your contributions to SEDRP. Our advisory board is fifteen members, and we represent the, the range of SEDRP's geography and professional sectors. And they help formulate and carry out the strategic direction of the partnership by providing input on the future of the partnership, fiscal development, and enhancing connections and with related agencies and organizations. And a big welcome to our new incoming 2025 Advisory Board members. In the academic institute, institution seats, we have Asla Osland from Georgia Southern University, Megan Jones, Megan's here somewhere, from University of Georgia Seagrant. And in the federal government seat, we have Alyssa Zabrowski, NOAA Disaster Preparedness Program. And in the local government seat, Patricia Gomez from Miami-Dade County Office of Resilience. So new and returning members of, of the advisory board, a very warm thank you for your contributions, your time, your service to SEDRP, our partners, our communities, our region. Next, how you can get involved. So we have three working committees that are led by board members, but also open to all SEDRP individual and group members. So during 2025, committees will meet virtually for one hour every two months, so that's six times. And occasionally there will be document reviews or email discussions. So committees are a great way to really get to know other SEDRP members and participate in lively discussions, collaborative efforts. And dare I say, we actually have fun in our committees. So next, I'd like to ask the new committee chairs and co-chairs to please come forward. Committee chairs and co-chairs, we're just going to go through one committee at a time. And please describe the purpose of your committee, if you want to add any goals that you have for 2025. First, the Chair of the 2025 Governance Committee, Amanda Guthrie.
Thank you all for being here, and as I have the mic, I'm also going to use as an opportunity to us to feel the power that we have in the room here. We are all here moving forward and progressing and pushing this field in every way that we can. So collectively, I invite us all to take a deep breath and feel the power that we have as a community here. So with that, I am the new Chair of the Governance Committee, and we have the wonderful role of helping streamline the processes and pathways to move forward for SEDRP. You see, there is a lot of people on our advisory board and a lot of others that are involved behind the scenes. And so what we do is we help make that streamlined and easy and seamless with what we do. So I invite those that have both nonprofit experience, but also might be a little bit nonprofit curious and how you might want to understand how we engage. As you probably are familiar, we are part of Soccora, the Southeast Coastal and Regional Observing, Ocean Observing Soccora. And so we, we have that interface, and so how do we work within that? And how do we work within Soccora's bounds as we are a sub-partner within that? So again, those that are currently with, or have prior nonprofit experience or are in that little nonprofit curious and want to learn more about how groups like this work, we invite you to join and help make things simple and easy. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, next up, Partnership Committee. Chair of the 2025 Partnership Committee, Brian Byfield, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience.
All right, everyone, thanks. You get the misfortune of working with me. Okay? One of the things, we, we think about ourselves as a community of practice. One of the main things we do is to share information, technical expertise, experiences, and so on in our monthly calls. And this is one of the main things that we'll be doing, getting information out to and from our membership. So if you're interested in being a part of that group, please come and work with me and the rest of the team so we can have, I guess we can call this mini conferences every month.
Thank you, Brian. And at this point, I want to point out that we have signup sheets at the corner of the registration table for any members, new members, veteran members that might want to join a committee for this year. Next up, co-chairs of the Development Committee, Randall Matthews from Chatham Emergency Management and Holly Schmidt from Jacobs.
Thank you. Clearly, I'm the extroverted one out of the two co-chairs, so I will, I will give our update. Great to see everybody. I, I just have to take a moment and say, what an amazing event. This is my third annual meeting, my first year as an advisory board member, and I'm just continually impressed with the breadth and depth of skill sets and backgrounds that I experience when I'm here. The passion that's in the room, you know, I mean, I can't get Seaford Cookie out of my head. I don't know if you can either, but thank you for that. Where was she that did saying that this morning? But it's just been a wonderful event. So we're even more committed as an advisory board to throw a bang in tenth anniversary. And so as the Development Committee, we are really looking to bring in money. How do we grow and bring in additional funds? I don't think it's anything that hasn't been said, but we are a federally grunt, grant-funded, feels like a grunt sometimes, especially right now, grant-funded entity. And so while our membership is our study, our steady stream of income, we really rely on that federal grant. And that's, you know, there's some shifting waves around that. So we have an appeal as a Development Committee. Number one, please sign up and help us. Everyone out here has your network, you have your relationships. You know, bring, bring those to us. Join our board. We're the funnest of the three, I can tell you that. So, and now there's four. Oh, there's a finance committee. Ooh. Okay, and so number two, please get your membership up to date. If you've renewed your membership, thank you very much. If you're not a member yet, please join. If you are a member, please bring one more person in. I know I'm going to bring my daughter in. She's a student at University of Florida in Environmental Engineering. She would love to be a part of this organization. And I'm going to go back to my company and say, hey, let's at least do the thousand-dollar partnership and bring in two new members. So if we can all make that kind of commitment to help grow us, that really helps, you know, give us that stable stream of income so that we can come back next year and do this again. You know, we sold out. This event sold out. So our goal is that next year we have a bigger venue. Maybe we can grow our attendees by twenty-five, fifty percent. Maybe we can double in size by next year. So, you know, that's really our goal, is to get that excitement going and continue the momentum and really thrive. And then finally, there's the ability to just donate to the organization. There's a donation button on the website. You can do a one-time donation, you can do a recurring donation. So continue to invest in us, and we're going to continue to invest in you. So thank you very much. Anything?
Well said.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Holly. Well, thank you, committee chairs and co-chairs. Thank you so much. So please, please, bring your experience, your expertise, your knowledge to SEDRP through these committees. It's, it's a great, great entryway. Please reach out to us if you're interested in joining any of these committees at sedrp@soccora.org. And when you email us, you get me and Claire. So thank you for your consideration of that, and, and thank you, chairs, for your commitment. So currently, priority issues for, whoops. Priority issues for the partnership include building state, territory, tribal, and local capacity to advance resilience, accelerating equitable recovery from disasters, increasing connectivity and resource sharing among federal, state, and local governments across and within the region on disaster and climate resilience, and catalyzing positive social, economic, and environmental change in the face of increasing climate risks, and developing the next generation of resilience professionals. And that's why I'm excited to introduce to you and share one of our newest and most impactful initiatives, the SEDRP Mentorship Program. So we have been thrilled. We've been absolutely thrilled with the response this year. Starting, starting up a mentorship program has reinvigorated some of our longstanding members, and it's also brought an infusion of, of fresh, new, delightful additions to SEDRP. And SEDRP is deeply committed to building and fostering the next generation of resilience professionals in the U.S. Southeast and Caribbean region. And launching our mentorship program has been an important initiative in that direction. So being involved in a mentorship program has benefits that are many and multifaceted. As mentees, students, and early career professionals, they build their network, they build professional skills. Additionally, mentees receive guidance on general or specific professional areas, answers about being a working professional, what is it like? Advice on early career development strategies, guidance on navigating networking and organizational settings. What do I do when I go to a conference? As mentors, there are many benefits, too, including creating stronger connection to challenges, strengths, and concerns of students and early career professionals. Having access to innovative thinkers and motivation to remain current. How much have we heard about imagination and creativity over the last two days? Having the opportunity to strengthen your leadership skills, and having the opportunity to make a difference in the life of someone, literally. And it's more important now than, than ever. So meet the twenty-three members of Cohort Number One of the SEDRP Mentorship Program. If you are here today, please stand up and let us give you a round of applause. A big, big thank you to each one of you for your participation. So for those that maybe have never been a mentee or a mentor before, the SEDRP Mentorship Program has structure, training, guidance. We conduct informational sessions first, and then each participant fills out a comprehensive questionnaire, and that really aids us in the matchmaking process. We match mentors with mentees based on their stated goals and preferences. So in Cohort One, we actually had several participants that chose to be both a mentor and a mentee. And once the matches were made, then I conducted introductory sessions with everyone. And then our SEDRP Program Coordinator, Claire McGrath, led a second set of training sessions with the pairs that really dug into the details of our particular program. So we shared mentoring best practices, resources and modules, suggestions for topics, and how to schedule your sessions. And we had thoughtful and productive discussions regarding social identity and culturally aware mentoring. So these materials and training sessions helped our mentees set tangible goals for their mentoring time, and it facilitated our mentors to help them achieve those goals. So as the cohorts build and connect over time, we expect the SEDRP Mentorship Program to really have far-reaching and cumulative impacts that build capacity, retention, and recruitment within this fast-changing and growing fields of climate adaptation, resilience, emergency management, and disaster preparedness, response, and recovery. So Cohort Number Two will begin during fall 2025 and will follow the academic year through spring 2026. So we invite you to join Cohort Number Two. So for more information, right after the, the next panel, we're going to have a little huddle, and we're going to meet over in that corner of the ballroom for anyone that's interested in being a part of Cohort Number Two. And now let's hear from some of our recent mentors and mentees. So it's my absolute pleasure to bring up Claire McGrath, the SEDRP Program Coordinator. Claire came to SEDRP in May 2024, and she brought with her a strong nine-year background in nonprofits. Claire has made massive improvements to the SEDRP newsletter, the website, and outreach since joining our small but mighty team. So Claire also is, has been an integral part of building the SEDRP Mentorship Program from the ground up. And I'm excited to have her moderate this next session. Ladies and gentlemen, Claire McGrath.
Thank you, Heather. And I'd like to invite our panelists to come forward. So, yeah, you guys can come on up. And while you're coming up, because I may not have the opportunity later, before we get started, I'd like to take a minute and acknowledge and thank Heather for her leadership of SEDRP and for bringing us together for these two days to learn from one another, build relationships, and find hope in the work that we're doing together. It took an incredible amount of work to put this together, so thank you, Heather. Let's give Heather a round of applause. All right. So as Heather said, my name is Claire McGrath. I am the SEDRP Program Coordinator, and I have been thrilled to be involved with the formation of SEDRP's Mentorship Program. I'm pleased to introduce our panelists for our discussion today. First, we have Patrick Howell from the Institute for Building Technology and Safety, IBTS. Patrick serves on the SEDRP Advisory Board and was very integral to the formation of the SEDRP Mentorship Program, and Patrick was a mentor to Adelaide. Adelaide Bates is from the Shai Institute for Sustainable Communities at Furman University, and Adelaide was a mentee in this year's cohort. Next, we have Stephanie Kelly from Earth Matters Planning and Design. Stephanie was in the unique position of being both a mentor and a mentee in this cohort. And she was a mentee to Catherine Egan. Catherine Egan is from the NOAA Southeast and Caribbean Regional Collaboration Team, CCART, which is not affiliated with SEDRP. We've had a couple of questions about that, although very similar acronyms. Catherine also serves as an outgoing member of the SEDRP Advisory Board, and she was a mentor to Stephanie. So with that, we'll jump into some questions for our panelists, and I'm going to take a seat. So I'd like to start off with a question for all of you. And that question is, what were your personal motivations for choosing to be either a mentor or a mentee or both in this program?
Go. I'll, I'll kick us off. Yeah, I, I like the question because it was personal motivations. And, you know, when I first thought about joining the Mentorship Program, you know, I, I was thinking, oh, that sounds like fun. I'd be happy to do that. But then when I really had to kind of reflect on, well, what exactly were my motivations? You know, I had to, had to be real with myself and, and recognize that it was about fifty percent personal, kind of selfish motivations, then the other fifty percent was, you know, for, for impact and to, to support others. And, you know, some of the things that, that I really got out of it, again, on reflection, looking at what those personal motivations were, you know, it was an opportunity for me to learn and refine my own skills. I think, especially as it relates to those, those soft skills and interpersonal skills and being able to, you know, relate with someone that I didn't previously know, right? I think that's something that we're always, or all of us are, to some degree are familiar with, especially in this field, when we're engaging with communities, when we're engaging with other professionals. You know, we have to be able to relate to people that we don't really know and build rapport and build relationship. And so I just saw this as an opportunity to do that. You know, not to mention just having the opportunity to actually learn more technical skills even. You know, I've, I, I learned a lot from, from Adelaide through, through our conversations that I feel has, you know, really enriched my, my own career. So, you know, those were some of the, the selfish, kind of personal motivations. And then, of course, you know, some of the more altruistic ones is, as, as Heather mentioned in the slide that she shared earlier on the Mentorship Program, it's, you know, being able to, to amplify impact. The impact that I can have is, might be limited to the one or two or three projects that I'm working on at, at any given time in any given community. And, you know, by reaching out and being able to impact another professional that's working in a similar field and a similar space, that just amplifies my own or, you know, it, the, the impact's going to exponentially grow in that way.
Mine went on a little easier, I think. Y'all hear me? Well, I think I'll have a more traditional answer to this question as an early career mentee. But what I was looking for in a mentorship program was just, I'm so early in that I have the opportunity right now to really focus on skill development, but there are a million ways that I could go with that. And so having the opportunity to really get advice from somebody, guidance, and really know how to lean into my strengths and take the time to talk what my strengths might be with a mentor and somebody who's a seasoned career professional was what I was looking for. And it's really been helpful since I'm able to dedicate some of that time right now and over the next few years. So looking for advice on what skills to develop was what I was seeking out.
Hi, yes, Stephanie Kelly, and I'm super excited to be part of this initial Mentorship Program. I wanted to tell you a little bit about my journey, just in case it resonates with anybody else in the room that might be interested in the program. So I was a traditional landscape architect practicing in the commercial and development industry. And it's not a job that I ever saw myself getting into, but it's kind of where I landed after school. I actually became a landscape architect because of my interest in sustainability in the built environment and seeing the urbanization that was happening all throughout North Carolina. And that type of job just was not available at the turn of the century, which is weird to say, but at the turn of the century, when I first got my job. So I struggled in that position for a while and then got stuck in it with the Great Recession, which I know some of you out there felt that pain for quite a long time in this industry. And in 2014, I had the happy occasion to move here to Wilmington when I got married and started feeling the impacts of climate change firsthand, living in a coastal community and seeing the sea level rise and, and experiencing those extreme hurricanes and looking around and seeing the Ghost Forest. And that really resparked the urgency in me to do something about it. So I found out about new program opportunities at NC State University. I took their Climate Change and Society Master's Program to learn about climate dynamics and human impact and those natural processes, so I would understand it better. I went back into the Master of Landscape Architecture Program, where they had new resilience professionals like Andy Fox in his Coastal Dynamics Studio and Dr. Gavin Smith, who I'm so excited to see here today because he was my first mentor back in my journey to recreate myself and to be a part of his Disaster Resilience Policy Engineering and Design Program. And so going back to school, being, learning those skill sets gave me the tools that I needed to now take the next step in my journey, which is to start my own independent consultancy, Earth Matters Planning and Design, where I am looking to focus on coastal resilience work. And so the Mentorship Program came about at the same time that I was starting this company. It was perfect timing. And so I was really interested in the transdisciplinary nature of the network that is involved here. And so I wanted to, to tap into that, and I wanted to work with somebody that was in a different discipline than me to really understand their perspective. And so I requested to get a scientist, and lo and behold, I was really super lucky to get Catherine Egan and, and the cross-pollination work that she does with NOAA. And she's been such a wonderful impact. And at the same time, because of the experience that I've had, I felt like I also had something to give as a mentor. And so I signed up for that aspect, too. And I'm super excited to have Amber O'Quinn here in the audience. She's been an amazing mentee, and I've also learned a ton from, from that relationship as well. So it's been super impactful to me, and, and, you know, I hope that the program will continue, and I thank you.
Hopefully on, yes. Yeah, my motivation for joining the SEDRP Mentorship Program was twofold. Stephanie touched on it a little bit here. But part of my position at NOAA is to connect people to NOAA. You know, get them aware of what resources exist in the agency, connect them with people who work in a field that they may be interested in. And I think if there's one thing maybe we've learned here, maybe you all know, is that NOAA is a really complex organization that, again, like I said yesterday morning, has a really broad mission. So I saw an opportunity here to connect somebody within SEDRP one-on-one with those kinds of resources. And my second motivation for joining the Mentorship Program was, you know, I've been so fortunate to have incredible mentors throughout my life. You know, I'm a first-generation college student, I'm a first-generation professional. I wouldn't be sitting up here if it wasn't for I wouldn't be sitting up here if it wasn't for the mentors in my life, so I learned a lot on how to mentor other people through them. And so I really saw this as an opportunity to apply those skills to somebody else within SCDRP.
Thank you. Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. Yeah, thank you all. Thank you all so much. I think it's, this program has been so interesting because we have such a wide variety of both mentors and mentees who are coming for different reasons and looking for different things, and, you know, bringing this vast array of experience, and you all demonstrate that beautifully. So my next question is for Catherine and Stephanie. What is an insight, a skill, or a piece of knowledge that you gained in your mentorship experience that has changed the way that you show up in your work?
So there's been a lot. The communication and collaboration, the shared resources, all of that's been really tremendously important to me, but there is one moment that Catherine probably doesn't realize. She was kind enough to invite me to a SCART meeting to shadow and to see how the different departments were coordinating, communicating, and collaborating with one another. And she did something at the beginning of that meeting that made me realize that this is a leadership skill that I need to reflect on and implement, and that was, this meeting happened right after Hurricane Helene. All the folks in her district had been heavily impacted, they were tired, you know, stressed, and she took the time and the space to have empathy, which is, you know, rooted in the bottom of all our work, and allow people to tell their stories and share what they were going through, and that was a really good reminder and an impactful reminder of creating that space to allow people that are working, you know, allowing each other to share and to de-stress, so thank you.
You, Stephanie. My gosh, I shouldn't expect to tear up up here. Yeah, I mean, so I told Stephanie this on the mentor meetup on Monday, but I was not expecting to get matched up with Stephanie. I was expecting to get matched up with a student, actually, somebody who was early career, Stephanie's mid-career, she's starting her own business. So just, our meetings alone have completely changed the way I think about how NOAA connects with folks in the private industry. How do we provide landscape architects with NOAA data? She got me thinking about like, how does the agency connect with consultants? How can we get her in on grants that NOAA has put out the door where they may need consultants? And I went down a rabbit hole and was like, learning all about contracts, so, and so Stephanie really helped me figure out like, how can we serve maybe what I think of as like a non-traditional user? I think a lot about like state and local government academics using NOAA's data and resources and contacts. So she really has completely changed my perspective on who I should be connecting here within the Southeast and Caribbean.
Thank you both. My next question is for Patrick and Adelaide. Can you share something that you learned or gained from the mentorship program that maybe you didn't expect? Maybe an unexpected benefit, or an aha moment, or just something surprising?
I've been really excited to answer this question. I had quite the aha moment during my mentorship with Patrick, but when I first came in, I showed up with like a really long list of skills for us to walk through together, and it was really heavy on some technical skills, because I work with a lot of, an applied research team and a lot of communities and technical assistance providers. And so I really wanted to know, what do I need to be proficient in? Like, what do I need to be an expert in? What should I start investing in now? And ultimately, we decided, or in talking through what my strengths were, that I don't need to be an expert in everything. None of us can be. And so the conversation kind of came back around to what my strengths are, and I love serving as the glue between all of the entities that I work with, the communities and the service providers. And so we focused a lot on what skills I can develop to help me in that, in serving as the glue. So facilitation training and public speaking opportunities like this, as well as project management experience. So it was just an aha moment for me to stop thinking about what I need to be an expert in versus finding a way I can serve as the glue between a lot of experts.
There it is. That was a really fun conversation, to kind of go through that list and then say, well, these are all good, but maybe there's some other ones that we could focus on. I think for me, you know, what I didn't expect, and I guess it's kind of related to the previous question about, you know, how it's changed how I show up and work, and that is, you know, realizing that I need to walk the talk. You know, if I am, you know, giving advice about continuous learning, about professional development, about creativity, about engaging, well, I better be doing that myself. And so it kind of made me take a hard look at the mirror and say, where am I doing this in my own career? And, you know, how can I take my own advice, really, you know, to advance the work that I'm doing with communities across the country?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we've been talking a lot about, throughout these last two days, about hope and, you know, where we see hope, and I think mentorship is a real source of hope. And, you know, I've had the privilege of being able to get to know a lot of the mentors and mentees and see, and see how these relationships have been really powerful for not only mentees but also mentors, as you all have talked about. And so, you know, the power of mentorship, I think, is, gives me a lot of hope for the field of resilience. And so my last question, before we have a couple of minutes for an audience question or two, is for Adelaide. And it is, you know, kind of, you know, as an early career professional, how do you hope to see the field of resilience change over the next five to 10 years? And what role do you think mentorship plays in that?
All right. And I'm going to make it quick in case any of the other panelists want to join in too. I hope that we'll continue to break down silos, and we'll just encourage more cross-sector collaboration to really secure tangible resilience benefits. We have a lot of work to do, and it's going to take a lot of partners. And I see mentorship being an opportunity for us to start learning how to break down those silos and actually walk the walk, talk the talk, and, you know, doing cross-sector mentorship, so, but let somebody jump in.
Do any other panelists want to tackle that question as well?
I think Adelaide hit the nail on the head, yeah.
I want to open it up. We've got, we've got about five minutes, so I'd like to open it up to any audience questions, if anyone has questions about mentorship or about, for specifically any of our panelists. I see Dave, you have a microphone coming to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment Catherine on something that you said that was really, probably not many people picked up on it, but when, when you mentioned that you went through a rabbit hole of looking at contracts for how you can work with consultant or somebody else, that is a huge indication of somebody who wants to work with someone in the private sector, because I've gone down that road and tried to talk with people at NOAA who just do not want to take the time to touch that, because it's not their thing, you know? That's not what they do. That's too much work, it's all that sort of stuff. So I really just want to give you, you know, kudos and shout-outs for taking that step, because what I've noticed, and I've, you might notice, I've been around a little while and worked with NOAA for about 35 years on different things, and the younger, early-career, you know, mid-career folks that work there want to work with innovation, and they want to do, create new partnerships. And that is great, because there are, you know, others in the senior level are like, ah, I'm getting near retirement, I'm not going to do anything new, I'm not going, I'm just going to do what I keep doing. But you're making a big impact on private sector folks, and I just wanted to say thanks for that.
Really more of a comment, I guess, than a question, but thanks to SCDRP for creating the mentoring program. I've been involved in mentoring program with other organizations, and it's really, really important, so thanks for doing, Claire, Heather, thanks for doing that, and for all the people who were involved. And there's a lot of material out there to learn about mentoring and how important it is. And just a reminder to all of us that we are all both mentors and mentees every day in our personal and professional lives, and just remember that when you encounter professionals, when you encounter colleagues, when you encounter even family members, that it's a role we play, we learn, we teach, every day. And it's an important role that we play, particularly with younger colleagues, but it's a really, it's a really important role. And I get a lot with the programs I've been involved in, been a lot of satisfaction in helping younger people move up through an organization to learn kind of what's going on. So anyway, just remember, we all have the power, the skills, some of what makes a good mentor, that information is out there, and, you know, take a few minutes and just look over some of the list of what makes a good mentor or even what makes a good mentee, because that's also listening and learning and teaching, so, anyway.
That was beautifully said, Gino. Any other questions? Thank you all. Thank you to all of our panelists, and I would, let's give them a round of applause. And I would invite all of you to be a part of the mentorship program. As Gino just so beautifully said, we're all mentors and mentees, and we all have really unique skills that are really needed right now. So I'd encourage all of you to let us reach out. We will have, as Heather mentioned, an opportunity coming up next. If you're interested in the program, we'll kind of huddle over in that corner over there. And thank you all.